Okay, greetings everyone that's either here at the meeting or watching us live stream. We apologize for the delay. We had a couple of board members that will not be with us tonight. One of them is Commissioner Brian Marley. He's got a meeting in Hope County tonight that he's got to attend. And so he extends his sincere apologies that he will not be a part of the board meeting tonight. Commissioner Jerry Legg is resting at home this evening and we wish him, wish him well. So with that said, we'll go ahead and I'll call the meeting to order. We'll rise for pledge of allegiance and then we'll go right into the project summary.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and veritable in its essence.
Okay, we've got a lot of project developments in and around Hope Mills.
Yes.
Your manager, Chancellor.
It's all yours. Alright, so I welcome you to the development projects update. This is a highlight of residential, commercial, industrial and town of Hope Mills projects currently underway in some way, shape or form in the town. I will note that right now there are thirty separate projects under construction in Hope Mills, which is amazing. And so what you get is a nice breakdown of each. On each project, you'll get a location map that shows where it is relative to the town. You'll get a copy of the site plan that was approved and site photographs and a narrative that goes along with it. But I wanted to start with a quote. Be not afraid of growing slowly, be afraid of only standing still. Expansion plus leadership plus progress equals growth. And so, um, prior to the pandemic, um, the town experienced a record high in annexation and development ranging from across the board, retail, industrial, single-family residential, multifamily and projects we were doing. And that hasn't decreased. Um, it was kind of odd that during the pandemic, we had a tremendous increase in annexations and they maintained that, um, up until today. But before I get into the projects, I want to talk one second about planning with you. Um, everything on this screen, the thirty projects that are under construction, I don't, and, and, and a lot of things you don't see. Everything from a store share to a privacy fence to fit for life in some way, shape or form has to go through planning. And so this is a standing meeting, and I'm saying this to the general public, this is a standing meeting that is held every Thursday at nine o'clock. Um, it includes the planning department and the stormwater department, inspections, um, public works, fire. PD will be there. We actually started getting public county schools to attend because if we're with this significant amount of residential development you see, they need to track to see what the capacity, capacities are for the school systems. For example, over in the Stony Point area, you got New Century Middle School and New Century Elementary School. Eventually, they're gonna have to green light possibly New Century High School because of the massive amount of residential development just on that side of town. But I want to let everybody know that this is something we get a lot of kudos behind. Our chief building inspector was just a keynote speaker at a conference, um, out of Midwest and he asked him why'd you call us? And he said that he was told that we have one of the top inspections programs in the state. And so, um, there's a lot of layers to it. Um, developers who are interested in developing Hope Mills that come to gauge this first. We go through around what we call sketch plan meetings where we actually vet every aspect of the project from a company standpoint. So by the time it comes before you guys, we've talked to that developer for about three or four months. And what that does is it streamlines and elevates the level and standard of construction. So that you know in Hope Mills, if there's a project under construction, it is about the best and the highest quality in terms of how it's being built in that ultimate sense of town residents. So we'll move to residential development, single family. The first project we have is Preserve and Lake Upchurch. Um, like I said, you see the location map, site plan, photographs. This was approved for a total of a hundred and thirty-eight lots. Um, the subdivision is entering its last phase of development with Hope Mills Public Works Staff working and coordinating for street acceptance. Um, primary egress and ingress is off of Waldo's Beach. Um, it's just north of the I-95 with price points ranging around, um, starting at three hundred thousand. Next you have Georgetown Estates. This is another massive subdivision, uh, is approved for three hundred and forty-six single-family lots. They're about getting close to about halfway. Um, it's been under construction since I've been here about nine years. Um, but they are constantly building and, um, I would say the department that is interfacing with them the most would be public works. Um, they do submit the single-family residence for construction and inspections, but as they go from phase to phase, um, public works does take the lead for construction. Uh, the price points for these roadways, uh, this, um, subdivision started three eighty-eight. Next you have Sweetwater subdivision. Um, this was approved for seventy-five lots. Uh, primary egress is off of Elk Road. Um, they do have a secondary entrance in the rear of the neighborhood that connects to Windsap Road. Um, this is a subdivision, another thing too, any of your older subdivisions like Georgetown Estates and Valiant, they don't have sidewalks. Georgetown Estates don't have them at all, but Valiant has them in one phase, on one side of most of the phases. But anything brand new, they are required to have sidewalks on both sides. This subdivision does and the price point, um, price points begin at three hundred thousand. Next you have Sheffield Farms. This we've approved, um, phase five for annexation. They've completed phase five, we've done street acceptance on that phase as well. With thirty-eight single-family houses, phase six has also been annexed. It's currently under construction for a total of seventy-six single-family residences. Um, like I said, the streets of phase five have been accepted. Price points in this subdivision began at three sixteen. This one is close to Dr. McCray. This is the Pembroke subdivision that is adjacent to Blackbridge Village and it's not, it doesn't appear to be adjacent to Steeplechase off of Blackbridge Road, but Steeplechase is so big, it curves, um, at the end. And so the far end of this subdivision is connecting to Steeplechase. If you look at the site plan, it's actually connected at three different, um, sections, um, to two different subdivisions. But during the hurricane, there was some runoff in Steeplechase, um, because the stormwater measures, um, were disrupted because of the volume of water. But this is that subdivision that's right beside Blackbridge Village off of Blackbridge Road. And, um, this one hadn't started construction vertical, but if you look at the, uh, the site photographs, they're doing all the infrastructure now. The next one is another massive subdivision off of San Hill Road. This is the outermost boundary of our MIA. It was annexed in for a total of six hundred and forty-three residential units. It's two hundred and sixty-nine townhouses and three hundred and seventy-four single-family residents. And ironically, if you go to Dirtbag Hills now, they're clearing right behind Dirtbag Hills, but that's not this subdivision. There's another subdivision right behind Dirtbag that I'll get into called Eagle Cove. The secondary entrance to this Providence subdivision is the secondary entrance to, uh, Eagle Cove because they back up to each other. But Eagle Cove is access off of Corporation. You'll see that in a little bit. But this is, uh, probably one of the biggest ones we've done. It's the biggest Georgetown Estates is, this is about twice the size. They haven't started construction yet, they're going through PWC. It has been annexed, the subdivision has been approved by the town. And so, um, we'll know pretty soon when they'll start, um, clearing dirt and things of that nature. But it is approved on the books. Next you'll go into your multifamily residential developments.
Hey Chancellor?
Yes, sir.
Before you go into that, I sat here and just added up these numbers. One thousand, three hundred and forty-five single-family homes in the projects that you just mentioned.
And I'm, and I'm getting ready to present the same number as multifamily. It's about thirteen hundred multifamilies, well, on top of that.
Now the single family, the, the projects the Chancellor just briefed us totals one thousand, three hundred and forty-five single-family homes.
Yes, now this is not all new because places like Georgetown State, they, some of them are occupied. But I'm talking about the approved subdivision and the number of lots they were approved for. And I would say Sheffield and Preserve are the only ones that are near the end. The rest of them, they're wide open with construction right now. So you do have a significant amount of single-family or, or residential units. Um, and the one thing I want to make sure everyone's aware of, one of the biggest things that they speak of in economic development with regard to retail and industries, they call it rooftops.
Yes.
Um, we were looking at development in, um, um, Upchicken Foot Road for years, um, according to Publix and all these different places that kept saying it's too green. The minute we approved that Providence subdivision for six hundred units, she's dropped out of the sky. Wow, wow, it's crazy. Um, Circle Cave was redone. And so when you're looking at all this residential and people are wondering, where is all this commercial coming from? Somebody's paying attention to that. And so we do have to make sure it's done right. We do have to make sure that these projects follow the process. And like I said, every single one of those houses is coming through planning. Um, but these are quality homes. These are not, you know, um, um, developments that you're gonna have to worry about in terms of sustaining construction. And, but that is a, and that's just single-family. We already get into the, the multifamily now, um, but I'm glad you stopped to highlight that, um, because I'll give you a total number, um, at the end, but, um, that's where we are right now.
Any other, I would pause here if you have a question.
Okay.
And you know, and this is, this is really, really good because especially, I can't stress it enough, especially with military families, the need for housing, because I mean, I don't know how many times, but at least five times a day I get phone calls of, am I selling my house? And, you know, I'm looking at the VAH numbers for what soldiers will get and this is affordable housing and that, granted the cost of living and everything has gone up, but these houses will have no problem with it.
Well, and I'll tell you what, the craziest part is, you're in some of these areas and you're seeing the sale signs, sold signs on dirt.
Yeah.
That need to start a construction.
Oh, yeah.
When we're talking about our previous manager, Mr. Mazeros, we took him to Georgetown State. They didn't have anything on the books for sale with him and we are looking at twenty houses under construction. And so even though you're listing a significant amount of houses, they're selling just as fast as they're being built. And that's a good thing, we're tracking it as well. You don't want to saturate, but, um, we've been moving at this pace for at least the last five years. It doesn't seem to be slowing down at all. It's looking like it's gonna speed up, um, a little bit, but.
It, um, I, I just saw that we're tracking, we are keeping up with a number of police officers, firefighters and all of these key positions that we're going to need to service these people. And when we talk about, um, the building that we were in discussion with the other night, you're gonna have to have a building large enough to service all of these families that are coming to this area.
Well, it's interesting you brought that up. Because my police chief just left my office about two hours ago having this conversation. So we are putting some things in place just to ensure. Um, and so this is why I always talk about our planning review team and, and the group of, of people we have here. We're always looking well in advance. And so I won't let the cat out of the bag in specifically what we talked about. But, um, Chief Donald and I had that very specific, uh, conversation about that.
And it would be maintenance as well, like everything?
I mean, we're talking all staff and when you're talking about growing and when you're talking about public works, first thing Donald's gonna say is trash can. Because you're talking about six hundred residential units, that's six hundred trash cans. Um, we had to work with, uh, one of the developments that I'll get Eagle Cove right behind Dirtbag Hills because within that, it's about forty-five townhouses. They're row houses, they're high-end accountants and case, but we had to tell them we're not giving the trash can. Because if you get a green trash can, a blue trash can, times forty-five, that's a sea of trash cans at the street because it's townhouses, you don't have a yard. So what we worked out is the bigger dumpster pads at the ends, they didn't like it, but that's what, you know, we, we ultimately moved it because you can't take your trash can behind your house if you're living in a condo. And so just that in itself, people lose sight of that then. Just trash service alone is a major undertaking for public works and we are pumping this into my mind.
There's a, there's a lot of compromises that he's had.
Yeah, apartments that we don't do, apartments are considered commercial, so we don't do trash cans for commercial anyway, but townhouses are the simplest, they're sold. They look like apartments, but they're sold, they are single-family residence at that level. And so that was a pretty hard conversation we had to have, the planning with you. But it was done in effort so that you don't see, it's gonna mess up the streetscape. If you were to allow ninety cans, um, at street level, that's not a problem.
You know, as we go through this presentation of a lot to be mindful, that we have to always keep in mind that in our community, we need to have affordable houses.
Yes, yes.
And I know that's an issue that's being discussed, not only locally, but nationally.
Yes.
And these numbers are great, these price points, I understand those, but we still have to be mindful of affordable housing.
And, and that is something that I offer that. I have tracked, because I don't want to gentrify Hope Mills either. You know, that's basically what you're talking about. If everything, everybody can't afford three forty, three hundred and forty thousand, I'm housing. And so we are kind of deliberate in trying to attract a quality, affordable building to come in and give us a price point at a lower range. And so we are having this conversation.
Anybody else? Welcome.
Onto the next part. Next, we're going into multifamily. We have the one, which is the apartment complex directly across the street from Sweetwater. This was approved for three hundred and sixty units. It is currently well under construction. Um, they're dealing with, um, um, NCDQ right now and they are dealing with, um, PWC. They have water too, where they have to have water on site before our chief building inspector allows them to go vertical. But if you drop by there, you see those huge concrete pads that are ready to go vertical. And so, but they are approved for about three hundred and sixty units. If you know where Santa Fe Drive is in Hope, in, uh, Fayetteville, going to a long American, that nice apartment complex to the right, that's where this will be, same development. I think the one bedroom is gonna start at about fifteen hundred. So those are gonna be pretty. Now, I will tell you too, and, and this is Drew, um, talking, the biggest return on tax investment on industrial and multifamily development. And so when, when you, when I go through this next, next chapter, next, uh, phase in this, um, presentation, we're talking about a tax base being, um, being increased tremendously with residential development. Not all of them are at this price point, but the resi, the, uh, multifamily is a little bit more enticing as well as industrial as it makes the increase in development. Alright, next you have Camden Preserve. This is the development that connects to Valiant. This is development that we have been talking about for quite some time that will render Applegate Road obsolete. Because, um, now what you have in here is the initial approval of the subdivision. I didn't put a count in there because if you recall, they recently came in and got it rezoned to R5 and they have a, a small little pocket of commercial right at the entrance. So they're gonna build a grand entrance to this subdivision, or this development off of Camden. And it will consist of, uh, cabinets and case, um, townhouses and, uh, full-scale apartment complexes as well. I can't remember the entire count for both, but it's pretty massive as well. But it connects to Bretton Wood in the existing Valley Hill neighborhood. So the Valiant residents who do not like to, um, to utilize Applegate, they'll be able to utilize this entrance as well. And ironically, this entrance off Camden is also lining up with the eighty acre development, um, between Harvard and Hope Mills, the food line that I'll get into when we get to the next unit. And so that is, uh, the same developer, but this is, um, just time to leave multifamily. But this is a key project that we've been talking about for quite some time with the Applegate situation. And it has been approved. Um, we'll know a little bit more later in terms of permitting of it, but it's the advantage of the book of improvement. Next we have Eagle Cove. This is the subdivision, um, that is behind Dirtbag Hills. It was annexed into the town, it's approved for a hundred and eighty-three single-family lots and forty-five townhouses. Primary entrance is off of Corporation Drive. If you see that area to the right of Dirtbag Hills, they're clearing now, that is, um, the, uh, Dirtbag, um, Hills commercial strip that building. That's not subdivision. The subdivision connects to Corporation and goes through Dirtbag Hills in that development and aligns the entire rear of both. And so, um, it's a lot going on out there because Dirtbag Hills has a commercial development right beside them and a large residential development behind them. And this is the one that connects to the Providence subdivision, which is six hundred and something houses off of San Hill Road. So when you see this one, if you look at this site plan and you see that one connection at the very bottom, that's their secondary entrance that connects to the massive six hundred units. So you're probably looking at about nine hundred units right there in that area. Now imagine if I told you behind Sheeps alone, there's sixty-three acres of commercials that done, of commercially zoned property already in the town. Um, and it's probably about another hundred and fifty, um, to two hundred acres of already in the town, already zoned commercial right in this area. So I'm anticipating that when they do start construction this, you're gonna see a whole lot more, uh, retail resident, uh, and commercial pop up in the neighborhood. Alright, next you have the Reserve at Traymore. Um, I'm pretty sure everybody's seen it's under construction now, right behind Taco Bell. It's off of Town Center, um, um, Town Center, um, Drive. Um, it's approved right now, phase one is seventy-two units of apartments. Um, they are high-end. What you see in the construction now, actually isn't the, the units, it's the garages for the apartments. Um, but right now this phase is seventy-two units. I do think that this will support a lot of the, um, recent, um, commercial development that you see in Traymore Village, um, because you're pumping, um, seventy-two units right there in the back of a lot of those retail spaces.
Chancellor, any of these condos?
These are apartments. I think, uh, these, these are all apartments based on what our conversations are. Um, you do have like the previous one, um, Eagle Cove and the Camden Glen, those are a mix of apartments and townhouses. But this one at Traymore is strictly apartments based on our conversations.
Which I ask that is because every now and then I'll hear someone ask the question that they've heard that there was gonna be one building of condos.
Now, what I will tell you is that the original approval of Traymore Village did contemplate single-family residence behind Paris Teeter that connects to Lakewood. I think that is phase two of this, but those were approved for single-family residential. Now, if they wanted to amend that to do townhouses, they would have to come through here to do that. It would still be residential, but if it does shift to, um, uh, from single-family to townhouses, be simple, they'd have to come to plan with you anyway. So what has been brought to us so far is just this development, some construction. Next you have the Golf U Road Apartments. This is the apartment complex that we just executed the MOU and the, uh, easement agreement with. It was approved for a total of three hundred and seventy-seven units. Um, I think it's about, um, forty, some odd cottages and the rest are apartments. Um, but this is adjacent to our golf course. Um, they hadn't started construction yet. Ironically, this is the project that we have to reconsider on, um, the September hearing because of the, uh, I guess of the, um, issue of the approval language for the R5. They was calling the minutes. Uh, but that's this project. It's not, I don't anticipate there being any issues at all. It's just really more clerical, uh, procedure what we did after we did that. Next you have Elk Park Drive. This is actually being done by the same people doing the Golf U, um, development. But if you recall, the old trailer park behind Walmart and Loews, that's where this is. This has been approved for a while. Um, it's approved for a hundred and forty-four units. I think the Golf U project is gonna probably take off first. Um, but, uh, access for this development will be off of Elk Park Road, which is right behind Loews. If you make that left on Butler and you go past Loews and make that right, that's Elk Park Road. And so, um, this is another, um, um, high-end apartment complex. They'll have tell some charging stations and things of that nature. But this is cleaning up a pretty defunct area of town. It was kind of like a dumping site for quite some time. And we even tried to work with the, um, with the property on initially for years because he's trying to fortify the site. He doesn't live in town, but if it's a dumping site, he's responsible for it. And he finally found somebody that was interested in it. So that's what this development's for. Alright, now we'll go into the commercial developments. First up we have Caribou Coffee. Um, this is being built right beside the CBS on Lakewood. It's a point-two-five acre out blossom. And people don't realize, um, I think there may be one addition, two additional out blossoms in Traymore in addition to that single-family piece behind, um, Paris Teeter and that will be completely built out of tray. Um, this Caribou Coffee site used to be where the TNT fireworks tent would be set up all the time and it was just an out blossom and, um, um, they were able to find. This will be a drive-through facility. Um, it's only six hundred and twenty-five square feet in size. It costs sixteen apartment spaces, but it is a drive-through Caribou Coffee. It is under construction now. Now, and just in full disclosure too, for any project that's under construction, we do interface with the Hope Mills Chamber. So what happens is, um, our chief building inspector will tell us when it's start construction, but he'll also notify everybody in planning review when they're getting close to completion because we have to actually do the final site business. And so people don't realize from the time it comes in here to the time they open the door that we're interfacing with that development the entire time. But what happens is when we get the call from the chief building inspector to do the final site business, that's when I'll reach out to the Chamber to look into who the management is because we have connections with the GC. The people managing it, they'll be contacted by the Chamber. The Chamber sets up the ribbon cutting, they call us back, I reach out to you guys and that's how you facilitate the labor officials at the actual ribbon cutting for these events. But we do this for all commercial developments. Everybody may not be, you know, sometimes some of the larger chains may not be interested, but we do interface with the Chamber, uh, pretty actively with all of this construction that's going on, um, from a commercial standpoint. Next you have Chipotle. This is still at Traymore. Um, this is right at the corner of Waldo Beach and Rockfish Road. If you notice, it's on the site plan, you'll see two units. One of them is Chipotle. I'm hearing rumblings about three of users being the other, um, building. Not deliberately to say, um, one of them trying to lasso and drag here, but, um, we should know pretty soon, but we do know Chipotle is confirmed. And at some point in time, they'll build it to what they call a, a vanilla box shell. And at some point in time, they'll build it to what they call a little a vanilla box shell for the adjacent unit. So our tenant will come, it will be in Every, uh we just don't know um. It's about three different places that it's floating around.
Without saying too much, is it the one that I'm thinking of?
One sells sandwiches. One sells burgers. And one agents.
Okay, never mind, never mind.
Well, that one is somewhere else.
Okay, okay, alright.
I know what's the one you're talking about. But uh like again, it's site plan with the proof of two uh for commercial structure that will house two separate businesses at twenty-four hundred square feet each. Uh like I said, it's still, and this is all still in Traymore Village, all under construction at the same time. So you have the apartment complex off of Town Center Drive. You have these two units and you have Caribou, all in the construction on the same site. Next, we have Dollar Tree, still in the same area. This is across the street in front of the Food Lion on Waldo's Beach and that shopping center, that little strip in front of Food Lion. This is just to the right of that, you can drop by now, it's under construction. Uh the address is seventy-one sixty-three Rockfish Road. It was approved for nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven square foot retail facility, it is Dollar Tree. Um, yes, you?
Will that interfere with the Dollar Tree we have here with that closed down, or is this an addition?
It's an addition. Uh typically, we don't get into the marketing of it. Uh I still remember when I first got here nine years ago, uh everybody swore that the neighborhood of Walmart was from one Walmart or Hope Mills Road out of here. And Walmart or Hope Mills Road still remains, it's top Walmart in the region, um in addition to Loews. So I allow the marketing teams from the industry to determine their viability, uh but I haven't heard anything that would say that this Dollar Tree was negative impact to that Dollar Tree. Uh but this one um comes in to forty or at forty-two parking spaces. And I will say that some sometime in the future, I do wanna explore what you guys getting into. Some conversations about materials and things. We don't have overlay issues to get to materials, but with something like this Dollar Tree, because of what going into it, I would like to have the authority to make it full-size brick and things of that nature. So that is something we're exploring uh through the zoning department. We're not ready yet, but if I I do wanna quietly start looking at what the buildings are constructed of without doing anything negative to push the development along.
Um I remember when y'all worked really, really hard with the developers on the sign orders.
Yes.
And that was passed and everything looked good and then all of a sudden that it went back to the old. Is there any way we can bring the one that y'all worked on that get the signs aligned?
Well.
Bring that back up and see?
Well, what we did, what we initially did is um there was initially a push to go with monument signs. Um you see those around town, they're very popular in Hillhead, things of that nature. And so um I cautioned against making a requirement of all signs being monuments because you've been grandfathering just about every other sign in the whole town. But what we did when we changed it back, we kept the monument signs as an option. So you now have a sign order, so you can do a monument sign or a column sign. But I would like, right when I'm talking about material to buildings, I definitely would like to explore consistency in materials and things of that nature. We just have to be very careful because there's a three-letter acronym called U D L. It is not that popular. There is a way to do it that incentivizes development. And so when we're having these conversations, we have to be very careful not to push so so a little too hard that you're negatively impacting the development. I don't think there's any developer that wouldn't wouldn't have an issue with enhancing development is when it starts to get into their profit margin, when it becomes a little bit too advanced, but we all have it. All right, next you have Camden Commons, which is the probably will be the largest commercial development we've done so far. Um if you were here prior to Millstone and Traymore, this is basically another one of those. Probably bigger than both of those. Um it's an eighty-acre site, the approved site plan calls for the construction of two separate hundred and twenty-eight thousand square foot retail buildings with nine separate out possums for retail development as well as three hundred and twelve units of multi-family. This is the development that I'm gonna try to use to bring us sit-down restaurants. Um there are several columns that I can't say out loud, but if we can get those, it's gonna be a major, major win for the town. And so this is, ironically, it's right down the street from Traymore Village. All this is happening in the same area, I think, when the field development is all inside town. Um but that's a good thing. This is commercial development, which is being anchored, um just anchoring the residential development that you see. Next, you have Covert's. This is the second to last out parcel at Millstone. Um was a posse thirty-three twenty Camden Road, was approved for only a one-point acre parcel. Uh the building is about forty-seven hundred square feet, costs forty-four parking spaces. Covert's is a midwestern um eatery, they make a frozen custard. They call them butter burgers or smash burgers, they do sell fish and things of that nature. Um a fast food restaurant there, I think this would be the first one in this area. Um but it is something that uh they should be complete pretty soon, they're 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 pretty, they're rocking well.
Do we have a ribbon cutting date?
Not yet, but like I said, we're tracking. So Kenny will tell us, I actually got to talk to him about it this past Thursday, plan review. So as soon as we get close, now we know the owner for this one. And so we won't have to actually uh research. I can just tell Lake, hey, we're getting ready to do the final site inspections, reach out to the owner. They reached out to us to do the groundbreaking and sort of ribbon cutting. I think it'd be perfect, but we'll definitely let the Chamber in there when we're done.
And the owner is very, very um, he's he's happy to be included at Hope Mills. Like he was actually, he donated bikes to the bike rodeo a couple months back. So I remember seeing him there and talking to him and everything, so yeah.
And he was a retired military too.
Yeah, yeah.
And so um you have a military veteran, Hope Mills resident. They specifically chose this um town to break that frame down. He went out Midwest to get trained and uh was very adamant about bringing it here. Next, you have Freddy's. Um this is in the Millstone, uh not Millstone, Mill Village Shopping Center where Fit for Life is. Um I'm glad they finally starting to put the signs up because everybody like, what is that, what is that? Freddy's sign is not up, but you can look at it now, I looked about at it today, taking pictures. They're putting the awnings up and things of that nature, and it looks good. Um because you have the Discount Tire and the Freddy's right beside each other, which is right beside signs and things of that nature. At Fit for Life, I mean, that's one of the biggest fitness centers that we have in town. Um address is twenty-eight sixty Hope Mills Road. Um site plan approved for three thousand square feet. Um they are um providing forty-two parking spaces. Um access to the site is within the site. Um this is kind of tied to what we have in ordinance that we approved called cross lateral access. So this site gives access to Discount Tire from within the actual Mill Village Shopping Center. That way that you can get, if I wanted to go from Fit for Life to Freddy's and to Discount Tire. And there's a connection on the back end of both of these that connects to Advanced Auto Parts and Sonic. So that whole area is connected by the development of this project.
Ribbon cutting?
It's coming.
Okay.
Now, now what's gonna happen is all of these are probably gonna start completing at the same time. So you may have something where you're gonna have a series of these. Um and even with our projects, um because you you know, we don't ribbon cut ours as well. So you may have a period of time where you might have five or six of these um they're the same weekend. Period of time. Uh Discount Tire, this is right beside it. If you look at some of the photographs, I wanted to take photographs of both in one one plane view. Um this is a is a tad bit larger, it's nine thousand square feet, they'll act with thirty-eight parking spaces. But again, you have to drive past Freddy's within the shopping center to get to Discount Tire. Um because the access to Freddy's in Discount Tire, because the V L T is not gonna give two more characters. So the entrance into the shopping center for Fit for Life is the same entrance for all of them. Next, you have Wawa's. Um this is the Wawa's Travel Center. Um it's massive, it's a eight thousand three hundred and fifty-five square foot travel center, I'm not gonna call it the gas station, it's a travel center. It's the largest one I think that Wawa's had ever constructed. Um if you recall, um there was a uh issue that we had been trying to deal with. People driving commercial vehicle trucks, um because in the entire county, you can't have a commercial vehicle over twenty-five feet on the residential street, that's the name of the cab. So if you drive trucks, you cannot take your cab and your trailer on any residential street. And it's enforced by the police. So when Sheets first came along, we asked them like, you know, would you want giving us ten overnight parking spaces? They gave us forty. Asked the same thing with Wawa's, they gave us about forty something as well. If you drive by Sheets right now, there's about sixty trucks in that parking area. And just for context, if you're on ninety-five from Florence, South Carolina, there's not a full-service truck stop until you get to Benson on ninety-five. So throughout this entire county, there's not a full-service truck stop. But these two gas stations having an insight to have a massive area in the rear just for overnight truck parking, this helping a lot of people that drive trucks in the city.
And the ribbon cutting for Wawa?
Twenty-nine.
Groundbreaking. It's been twenty-nine, that's a groundbreaking, they did invite us out to it as well. And so some of these you're gonna have too, you're gonna have a groundbreaking and even have a ribbon cutting. Wawa's is so big, they're driving this. And so I didn't have to make the connection with um the Chamber, they contacted us, we didn't get contact with them. But they're under construction right now. Um if you recall, we just approved a two-hundred-foot-tall sign, that's what this site, that's this is the site that's what we approved for. Next, you have Dirtbag Plaza. This is the development um just beside Dirtbag Els. It is calling for seven retail shops and an acre sit-down barbecue restaurant. There's a food truck called The Barbecue Lab. This will be a sit-down barbecue restaurant. So picture the shops on Main that have Starbucks, but bigger. And so I think that shops on Main has, I wanna say five retail spaces and Starbucks. This will have seven retail shops. I haven't heard anything on um um the end users, but I do know they have identified barbecue lab there, there acre ten, it's a good sit-down. This will also uh help out tremendously tremendously with the parking issues in Dirtbag because I think they were not required to do anywhere near the amount that they did, but I think they're putting about four hundred parking spaces on this side. And so that'll help out a whole lot with overflow parking because if you recall, we had a met uh several issues with the parking on Corporation Drive. This will solve that completely. They actually cleared it for people to park up there now, but now it's under construction when it's finished, you shouldn't have any issue with it. All right, now we'll get into your industrial developments. Um first, you have the Frito Lay Distribution Center. It's an eleven-point-six-five acre industrial site. Um it's located at fifty-eight U S three oh one. It was approved for the construction of a twenty-one thousand five hundred and one square foot industrial center. Um the site proposes thirty-nine standard spaces in addition to forty-six R V spaces. It is under construction now. Uh this is something that we we talked about very extensively with the developers uh a year or two ago. But uh they are fully, they are under construction. I'm not sure how close they are, but I can check with them inspection on their plan review. Next, you have, we call it Sky one oh one. This is a twenty-one acre industrial site, it's annexed into the town, it's a one-on-one town starting road. The existing facility, this is complete. Um it's a hundred and twenty-five um thousand square foot facility. It's being marketed by F C E D C. It's on their website, it's being marketed as a class A industrial building, it costs seventy parking spaces. This is a building that I would love to roll into the economic development committee because F C E D C is actually marketing it, but I wanna get a little aggressive and creative and see how we can work with F C E D C to help market this because a hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot facility, that's a lot of jobs. And so right now, it's um been vacant for about six months. And so they're trying to attract the end users, we haven't heard anything of it yet. But these are some of the developments that we we could talk about once that committee is fully up. Next, you have Liberty Point. This is right across the street from Dirtbag Els. It's a seventy-plus acre industrial site, it was approved for three separate industrial structures, one at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet, one at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand square feet, one at a hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet. The biggest building has been completed, it's occupied by United Space Postal Service. The second building, which is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand square feet, um is almost complete. Um we have to look into uh as to what the current um levels of construction, just what they have left to do. But they never started the third building, but the second building is, the shell is up, they just had to complete it, yeah. Um but this entire complex is another site that we could run into that same scenario. F C E D C is great at attracting industrial development, and so I'd like to partner with them and help market it to see if we can actually get them to uh other two buildings.
Anybody uh in any business identified for the for either of the other two buildings?
No, the other two one is only um the the second one isn't finished yet, the third one hadn't even started. So you only got one finished building out of the site, but that is occupied. And so um and it could be anything, it could be something where it is a, I haven't heard any major issues with the second building. It could be a market, I'm not sure, but that's something that we would bring to the table to talk through with uh Devon with the second third bill and F C E D C, hey, what can we do to kind of market this building and get the rest of the site developed? But um uh it was initially approved for seventy acres of industrial.
Chancellor, a guy that we met in in uh Rockin' Out. The company that helps with marketing and bringing businesses.
Yeah, you know what, I I know that is somebody we need to talk to.
Yeah, that would probably be a good idea. Um I have the name written down in another notebook, but I'm sure that the city officials are liking that and give it to us.
Because if you're talking about industrial, you're talking about job creation. Um and and so that's another thing you can push. You know, it's great to to push commercial development and even residential development too, but I wanna create jobs for the town as well. All right, now we'll go into our projects. Uh Reed's Journey Phase Two. If you have noticed, there's uh Reed, um La Marco and his blue colors. But uh we have two canopies put up recently, smaller one by the splash pad. If you notice, we have a massive um uh canopy uh shelter that was just uh built. This is the phase two of Reed's Journey. Now, what's also here, um we do habits, but the wheelchair swing. Um when when that is is operational, it's gonna, it's gonna be a game changer because I've never seen anything like this. And when we say wheelchair swing, it's not that you have to get out of your wheelchair. You wheel your chair on a platform, it locks in, and the platform's swinging. But this is also called an all-inclusive playroom. So anybody with special needs or any handicaps will not. So anybody with special needs or any handicaps will not feel excluded that play, that this playground. Um, another thing that phase two will bring us is landscaping, benches, and things of that nature. Cause we did here with just a playground, it's pretty hot out there. And so the canopies and the benches and the landscaping help soften it, we have to, uh, to make it a much more pleasurable environment for the development.
What is the?
Yeah.
What is the, do you have an expected completion date on that?
Um, I, all of this is all gonna complete around the same time. Um, I think this is gonna complete around the same time as Heritage Park, the same time as Coopers. And so we'll know something pretty soon, but gear up, cause it's gonna be several of these. Some are gonna be ours and some are gonna be in the town. I can get a confirmation probably by, by seven tonight on the completion of this. I'm thinking, uh, come on in, Lamarcos. Um, Donovan McCray asks, what is your anticipated completion date on phase two of, uh, all-inclusive Reeve's Journey?
Um, the end of September. Just long enough for us, um, and I've already, um, one of the last pieces to that is the Liberty Swing, which is here. It's gotta get a schedule report to be installed. And then I'm already working with a landscaper to get quotes to have plant materials coming. So we got trees, shrubs, um, the sides are already down. So we got, we got plant material of getting done, so, um, end of September.
And one thing I'll tell you, Lamarcos and I have been talking about local, um, especially with the landscaping and things of that nature. Um, and so we are having a conversation about that as well. Um, next you have Heritage Park. I'm not sure if you've driven by there, but the dam gates are up. Um, I was even taken aback, cause I didn't realize they were, they don't look that tall when they're laying on the ground. But that is amazing to see. And so, uh, we know also they're getting ready to come out here with the placards that have the historical, um, storyboards. They would come in with a massive amount of plant material, the plants and the trees and things of that nature. So I'm looking for the sitting out on the lawn and hearing the tranquility of the stream in this area. But I think these dam gates being erected, that is changing. You know, the, and, and when it was overgrown, you saw the flume in the woods. I didn't realize the thing was six, seven feet tall until they cleared it. This dwarfs the flume. And so the scale of it is what I'm excited about. And Lamarcos, I'm looking at what, October, September, uh, November?
They are looking at early October now. Um, they, they've got rain days that by law I gotta give them like twenty of them. But it's still within the, um, acceptance of the Part Ten Grant. So, um, they're gonna be substantially complete by the twenty-fourth of September, meaning we can use the park. And then punch list will, um, after the twenty-fourth, punch list lasts about thirty days, we're gonna come back and try to see the things that we find. So that's what we're looking at now with the rain days and some of the other delays we've had, um, permitting wise.
Yeah.
If you look on, if you look on the webpage now, um, a complete update of progress and, um, issues, you know, part, part of my, part of my, um, project report, I like to give the bad too. So I do disclose the issues with the rain days and delays, so that people understand why we're extending the scheduling this way.
I do wanna add one thing that on that Thursday, when the tropical storm Debbie Kool-Foo here, they had construction folks on-site that were there. And the flume worked. Cause I saw them, when I was down there at, at the, uh, at the dam, uh, they weren't, they were, actually, they were back there in the very back part doing some construction. Uh, but they were there. And so that's, they were through that storm.
And this is the main out of construction, Lamarcos, it didn't flood the site?
It did not, um, so the first thing I looked at after the rain, I went and set the flume to see if the filtration, sanding, etc. So the flume actually works the way it was designed to.
And that's the education for you, the flume is also a stormwater.
We did have a little bit of erosion in the back, so that's probably what you saw. You, you saw them trying to show up their erosion control in the back of the site. But, um, all things considered, that was minimal damage too. So they got minimal backfill, they gotta go back and correct.
But I wanted to highlight that, that construction crew was there on-site, the ribbon. Yeah, and, and that was, that's a hallmark. You've got, that's value.
Yeah. Are there four of those, uh, dam gates or two?
Three.
There's three?
That's three.
Well, I thought there was more if it's just the two. Where's the other ones going?
So, um, I don't know if the plan should not, so, um, if you look up, well, all the pictures on the webpage. So there's two adjacent to the, um, to the flume. And then the other one is towards the, um, the creek on the backside of what, you know what the open lawn is?
Oh, yeah.
That's where the other one is, kind of sitting off to the side, uh, overlooking creek here.
And so technically the open lawn will have one dam gate on one side by the stream, and then the other two by natural.
And the thought with that is, that particular, um, um, canopy, you know, we envision that being used as maybe a stage for maybe an outdoor, um, performance, small performance or music. So, you know, that would be a makeshift stage, um, if we ever do, um, performances or, or small music venues. Might be a good place for, um, um, Teresa Davis to maybe do some of her, do some of her, um, you know, her outdoor performances and stuff, so.
All right, next we have East Patterson Street. And so, um, I think many of you are aware of some of these projects, because this was included with the ask of the delegation in the short session. Um, Don provided a pretty, uh, extensive, uh, breakdown of what has happened to the Gabian Bears that we put in. Um, I'm pretty sure it didn't help with the previous hurricane we just had last week. Um, Geo Technical Board and the Creek Boxer we have been completed. And another thing people may not, uh, be aware of is the cleaning of the creek that public works has done that has helped. Stop a lot of the erosion and a lot of the flooding. Makes it's a lot of things happening in the area that are done that a lot of people aren't aware of. But East Patterson Street is something that we're gonna take right back into the long session. Uh, we're looking at grants right now as well. And so it's something that we are aware of, but, um, that is a project that's coming, we're gonna see it. Ludland Hills. One of our more interesting, uh, projects, uh, went out the bid on August fifth of twenty twenty-four. Um, it includes, I'm gonna read these into the record. Uh, includes removing and replacement of fourteen-hundred-and-twenty-three linear feet of twelve-to-fourteen-inch, uh, reinforced concrete pipe. Um, align fifteen to twelve, uh, one fifteen-hundred-and-twelve linear feet, uh, of cure-in-place liner, uh, installation of eight-hundred-and-thirty linear feet. Um, underdrain remover replacement of eleven catch bases. Um, relocate ten underground electric utilities that will include eleven-hundred tons of number fifty-seven stone, two thousand square yards of geotextile materials, seventy-nine tons of asphalt, surface course, and materials casting. And ironically, this is in that area that flooded on Sunday. Um, and so this is a project that, um, we've included in the management support for some time, but it had just gone out to bid. And so construction should start pretty soon. And so, um, the irony is that we have a project that we actually get ready to start, try to have moved in someplace. And last but not least, and it's correctly done, they started construction today, the multi-use path at the lake. Um, and it's talking about the removal of the existing asphalt path that holds the lake, uh, and replacing it with a concrete ADA compliant pathway. Um, and so if you recall, in addition to this, we have the, uh, Fan Pro Project that talks about sidewalks on the other side. Enhanced crosswalks at both ends on Trey Street and Fountain Lane. Mid-block crossing to, uh, serve as almost like the speed hump that you have in the parking lot at the back, there has a walkway over it, things of that nature. So that is something that, um, is on the books now, it's actually under construction now. Lamarcos and I were talking to Drew, Lamarcos was talking to Drew today about the two properties we just acquired off Fountain Lane. Let's go ahead and look into seeing where we can find the clients to go ahead and start designing that, so that we can redesign the whole parking lot that they're attracting from. But, um, that does conclude all of the projects, and I will say again for the record, with all these projects, there are thirty separate projects under construction right now, hopefully, at the same time. And the total number, um, is twenty-seven-hundred-and-twenty-six residential.
How many people do you think that's gonna increase our population?
Five thousand, um, probably. And I'm, I'm telling you now, the quicker these projects open with ribbon cutting, I guarantee you by September, we don't have that many more starting. So as these projects complete, you have more projects coming. And it's been continuous for at least the last five, six years or so. It's a great time to be in Oak Mills, I'm with one of the fastest growing regions in the area, and we're, we're, we're hitting it. Reason why I'm glad you guys called this particular meeting. This is every type of construction you have. You have commercial, you have retail, you have industrial, you have single-family residential and multifamily, all under construction at the same time. That is great, and, and it's quality construction. So, um, this is just a message to the citizens that, you know, we are, um, um, looking to, uh, increase the quality life of this town. Because at the same time we're doing this, we're increasing our parks and wet programs and things of that nature. So while we're attracting people to live here, we want you to stay here and be able to enjoy Oak Mills as opposed to having to leave to go someplace else to be able to do typically shopping and eating the things of that nature. But, uh, I, I guess I'll open up the floor to any other questions that you may have, but that does conclude, uh, under development.
Any further questions for the board? Pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, I, I just thank you all for doing this. Um, I know we didn't have a lot of people show up, but I will share the video, because people are always asking what is going there, what is going there? And I can't have people with it all, but it's good to have it in one packet.
I'll tell, I'll tell you, Donovan McCray, what I do love, because I track all this stuff, especially on social media. You'll see a post from someone that says, hey, what's going on here? And a citizen will post the site plan. So people are paying attention to this stuff. It'll surprise you, the people that are providing, cause we don't have to post on it. Someone posted, uh, I forgot what the development was, they posted the site plan and made a pulling it from the manager's report, they pulled them from the presentation from Emily or somewhere at the board meetings. Um, and so that does make me feel good that a lot of this stuff is being tracked, um, in some capacity where, um, the citizens are answering each other.
Number one site is Next Door. I will tell you, I have seen more and more questions on Next Door, along with site plans, commentary, and had some of these, some of these folks on Next Door even have an on-or-about anticipation date of ribbon cutting.
I, I'll have information that I can say, and one of them will tell me. And I can't, I won't confirm that they're correct, but they are spot on. Uh, and Next Door, they are pretty, uh, it's almost like industry, uh, residents, uh, because they are pretty, uh, plugged in to happen.
I'll tell you about the anchor stores, they, for some, they've got an insight, they share it. I mean, it's not just from Oak Mills, it's from every development.
Yeah.
When it hits Next Door. Okay, any other questions? Well, Chance, I'll tell you, this is a home run for, for the community and a home run for our residents. We will be posting these slides on the town website.
That's true.
Uh, for those that, uh, were not here tonight or live streaming, you'll be able to go back through and look at tonight's presentation. And we'll probably update this going forward, maybe do this quarterly.
We can, cause I'm telling you, I, I promise you, in four months, it's gonna be.
I would like to see us do this quarterly.
Yeah, we can do that.
I really do, I think it's, uh, it's transparent, and it's a very informative for the community. Uh, because every day up until they put those signs up down there at, um, at Freddy's, it was, what's going there? What's going there?
Well, see, it helps you guys too, because every one of these projects did not require board group. Some of these projects that are outright approvals, you won't see it. And so you're driving by, and so I'm glad you guys called us, because we can tell you, this is everything on the books right now of significant. That we're, and mind you, we are interfaced with every one of these projects. Uh, we always tell with, um, Lamarcos and his crew, because when they come to Plan Review, they're not staff, they're developers. They're treated as such, um, but it's just to make sure that if we're doing it, we're doing it at the same level of quality that we expect of the developers. So every one of the projects I present to you tonight is something that somebody at Plan Review is intimately involved in, in some way, shape, or form. And these are the projects we discuss every single person.
Every now and then, well, more now than then, I'll hear some comments, and I'm just gonna say what those comments are. And, and I take great pride in this comment, by the way. Oak Mills staff does not rubber stamp the approval. They put it through a saw blade. And I take pride in when I, when I hear that, and I said, yep, you're right.
And, and we tell people, um, we're not here to prevent your development, we're here to help you facilitate it, but you're gonna do it right. And I think it was Don that came up with this, or it might have been Kenny, I found Chief Bill's, that he said, as a two-letter complete sentence, we use the Plan Review all the time.
Yeah.
No. No is a complete sentence, we use it all the time. But we're not stifling, and that's what developers understand. Come to Plan Review, you may not like the answers, but we're gonna explain it to you, we're gonna help you actually come to compliance with it. And when you actually get to the point where you completely comply with it, oh, you get to business. So, you know, we, we work very well with them, we provide a service, and the sketch plan process is key. Uh, because I don't know of another region where you can walk in the door and get eight different sets of engineering-based, very technical, uh, interpretations of how the code is gonna apply to your project prior to acquisition of the site. Right, so now they can use that as an informed decision from a business standpoint, because sometimes people don't realize the project might, uh, property may be vacant for a reason. Because the water and sewer is twenty miles away or things of that nature, but they'll find that out during the due diligence piece period with us. And so we provide that service to, uh, the general public.
That's just a testament on the front end.
Yes.
And that's the shout-out to our planning review team. Yeah, I'm proud to put it through a buzzsaw.
Yeah.
Or a saw blade, as I'm, as I'm, every now and then, I'm, I'm told, that's good.
Yeah.
That's what they should do. And that's what they are doing, to protect the integrity, not only of, of our town, but of the project itself.
It's just gonna make it a part of the project.
Yeah. So about a high bar, yeah, you better believe it. We don't rubber stamp, I'm glad to hear we don't, and I'm glad that people say that. Anything else? All right, we're gonna adjourn this meeting and resume in about five minutes from now with our regular meeting. We are adjourned?